Good evening. Welcome to the May 16th zoning board of appeals meeting at 7:10 PM. This meeting is being audio and video recorded per Massachusetts open meeting laws. Our first hearing, which was scheduled for 7:00 PM, 9 Fruit Street for a special permit for converting a single family to a two-family home. The applicant has asked that we continue his hearing for another 90 days. This is the second request for continuance. He has asked us to continue it to November 30th, 2018.
November?
Of November. November, November 30, 2018.
You said 90 days.
I'm sorry. Let me say August, I'm sorry, August 15th. I don't know why you put November. August 15th, 2018. Any questions from the board?
How often do we grant continuances as from a historical perspective? Is this something that we have done in the past where we can grant one after another, after another? I'm just curious what the procedure is.
And I think Ms. Clark has asked the same question. We can, with a special permit, we can, we can grant continuances on a continuous period. I mean, obviously, if it gets to be, you know, over a year, I think we would probably question it and want to close out the hearing. But we can continue a hearing, whether it be on the part of the town or part of the applicant. On this individual, we actually continued the opening of his public hearing twice before we opened it. With special permits, there is no timeline from the time we open the hearing to when we close it. Once we close the public hearing, we have 100 days in order to make a decision. But there is no timeline, once we open the public hearing, as to when we have to close it. Okay? Any other questions from the board? Any questions from anybody in the audience?
Yes, Karen Clark, Seacong Street. I believe the last time Mr. Brogan asked for a continuance was, I think the reason given was so he would have some additional time to decide how he was going to move forward. Is there a reason? I mean, he's had 90 days from the last continuation, so three months. Is there any reason for this continuance?
His reasoning that he explained to the board was he, he still is looking at how he wants to move forward, what he wants to do, whether or not he wants to change something on the property, or how he wants to go about it. So he hasn't given us a definitive, but he has asked for us to continue it so he can look at his options on the property.
And at this point, is there any other information that the ZBA needs to make a decision? Only because we've had one hearing in which Mr. Brogan presented, and there were concerns from the neighborhood that we have a bylaw that's in direct conflict with what Mr. Brogan wants to do on the property, and that is have a basement apartment. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, as it stands right now, that basement apartment is being used. And my concern, and I'm sure some of the other neighbors' concerns are, if there's a fire in that home, and the person in the basement apartment cannot exit because it's, the basement does not meet fire code, there's not an egress, there's, there's one egress, a door. The other windows are little tiny, you know, basement windows that you couldn't get out of if there was a fire. So I guess, knowing that, how long is the ZBA going to allow that situation to exist without making a decision on the appeal?
Bob, do you want to address that at all, or?
I mean, I've never been in the house personally, but I know that the zoning does allow for someone to rent out rooms in their house up to four to five people. So, you know, if that's what he's doing, then that's legitimate. So it doesn't have to be a two-family to have other people renting from him in the building.
And my, and my understanding is also, is there, there are, and I have not been to the property, but based on the plan he submitted, there are two egresses. There is a rear door, and there is a side door on the driveway side. So there actually is two egresses from the, from the, from that lower level. So it isn't just one egress unless you've been there and seen something different than what he presented to us in a plan, showing us an egress in the rear of the property and an egress on the driveway side. Because I think he converted a window to a door, I think he pulled a permit to convert a window to a door, if I'm not mistaken?
He did pull a permit sometime back. I think he was changing some paneling or something and a door, door or window. So I didn't do the inspections on it, so.
Is that egress in the bedroom? Because the plans that he had put online for rental showed the bedroom in the corner with just a small basement window. And I guess the other question I have for the board would be, we have a bylaw too that states that the board judges one's application for a two-family based on the house as it stands. In other words, no change, no changes can be made to the house to accommodate a two-family. So.
No, I would disagree with that. The board actually has given out a conversion from a single family to a two-family with the house being torn down to be rebuilt. So based on that precedence, I don't, I don't think that that's what you're saying is accurate.
So in the past, the town of Norfolk has let somebody actually tear down a house to build a two-family?
Yes.
The only reason I question that, I apologize if I may not have the paperwork with me. Schedule of use, D2C2. Conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of the bylaw adoption to a two-family. And the other bylaw that we have states that the board may authorize the conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of the adoption of this bylaw to accommodate no more than two families, provided that, one, each resulting dwelling unit shall contain no less than 800 square feet, not included in any basement space or area below ground level, and shall have complete lavatory and sanitary facilities. And two, no exterior changes are made, which, in the judgment of the board, do not confirm, conform to a single-family character of the neighborhood. So the problem that I see with a basement apartment is that it's in direct violation with this bylaw, and indeed, Mr. Brogan has made changes to adapt this house to a two-family.
The, the only problem with that is Mr. Brogan's property is not all underground. So therefore, according to our bylaws and the state definition of a basement, it is not purely all a basement. A basement is considered completely underground. If you, you understand, a number, a part of Mr. Brogan's lower level is above ground. The parking, the driveway side is above ground.
Correct.
And as you go around the perimeter, a great deal is at above ground. So there's a question as to the square footage requirement that's below ground versus above ground that E, E2F is based on. Okay? So you have to, you have to look at that. So it's not, you can't just say, oh, any basement space, because in this case, part of this is above ground, so therefore, it doesn't meet completely the definition of a basement, as you would think in a colonial or a Cape where the entire basement would be underground.
But our bylaw reads partly or wholly underground.
Or area below ground level. Includes any basement space or area below ground level. But in Mr. Brogan's case, also because part of it's above ground, he can also excavate and lower his ground level and make it above ground. So this is one of the considerations he's been toying with in order to meet the bylaw.
But now he's changing.
It says, as you read.
The dwelling.
And the judgment of the board does not conform to the single-family characteristics of the neighborhood. He hasn't changed in the outside of the house, he's changing his, his earth level. So would that change the characteristics of a single-family house? This is what he's reviewing, and this is what he'll present to the board in August. So that's why we are willing to give him the continuance.
Okay. So that means anyone in Norfolk that has a basement, a walkout basement, can apply for a two-family, as long as there's a lavatory in the lower level?
No, not anybody. A, the house has to exist prior to our bylaws.
Right.
Okay?
But if that was the case.
If that was the case, a number of people probably would have the opportunity to change the type of house they own, they own.
And turn it into a two-family.
Yeah. Don't tell too many people.
Well, I mean, I think that the reason, you know, for this bylaw, I'm just assuming this is the reason in my mind, is to prevent, you know, two families being construct, or not constructed, but a single family being transferred over to a two-family, you know, kind of willy-nilly. And the bylaw is very specific about the basement area. And yes, Mr. Brogan may have a walkout basement, but three-quarters of that basement is underground.
Excuse me, I think there's a lot of conjecture here, okay? We're not ready or in a position to make any type of decision, okay, regarding this being a potential two-family. The bylaw speaks for itself, and whether 10 feet of that basement is considered at ground level and the remaining of it is underground, or more, okay, is at this point mute. He's asking for a continuance, which by law, okay, we should entertain, and if we're not going to give him a continuance, we have to have a good reason. At this point, all we're saying is we're going to continue this. The bylaw is very specific about basement space not counting towards a two-family.
Correct.
We all understand that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We all understand that. But we, we're granting him a continuance because, you know, unless we have some very specific reason to say no right now, we are obligated to grant him a continuance. That doesn't mean we're going to grant him many continuances over and over and over, but we're going to grant him a continuance to see if he wants to come back with something different that maybe he believes can conform to the bylaw. Just because that's what he believes doesn't mean that's the way the board is going to interpret the bylaw. All right?
Well, it's my, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Right, it's a lot of conjecture now, which really is unnecessary.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand what the boards, we have not seen plans. I assume that they're public record, and it's certainly something that.
We haven't seen any plans either.
We haven't, we haven't seen them either. So that's why we're, we might, we will consider granting him a continuance tonight, because we haven't seen anything.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I thought you said that you had seen plans from Mr. Brogan that shows that he changed a door in the back.
We saw those at the last hearing. That's where we saw those.
Yes.
Yeah. We haven't seen any new plans yet.
Okay.
Okay?
And, and it's the board's stand that they will allow Mr. Brogan to make changes to increase his chances of being approved for a two-family?
No, that's, that's a completely inaccurate statement. It's the board's position to hear Mr. Brogan at a public hearing. We don't know what Mr. Brogan's going to present to us, we don't know if he's going to withdraw, we know none of that. Until Mr. Brogan appears before us, we don't know any of that. He has asked us for a continuance. It will be this board's decision tonight whether we grant him that or not.
Okay.
That's all.
So I guess why we're in this limbo period, it is, it is, Mr. Brogan is permitted to make changes to his house?
No. I don't, I don't know where you're, I don't know where you're going with that. He's permitted, Mr. Brogan is permitted to make changes to his house, just like anybody else who pulls a building permit.
Correct. But he's permitted to make changes to his house that would influence the board's decision as to whether or not they would grant him a two-family?
No, I, I don't know where you're coming from.
Okay.
Why would we, the board, why would the board, why would we be granting him permission to change his house in order to make it a two-family?
Because earlier, I, I can't remember which board member, or if it was Mr. Bullock, mentioned that Mr. Brogan can make changes to his house, so he can then receive either an approval or a denial from the ZBA for his two-family application.
Mr. Brogan can apply for a building permit to make a change to his home.
Mm-hmm.
In order to change whether it be a single-family or a two-family home. But he has to pull a building permit. He can't go willy-nilly, as you stated earlier, and start making changes to his home in order to accommodate a two-family from a single-family home.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, because earlier you would say he could dig around the perimeter of his house.
If, if, if he, he would have to apply to the board. He can't just go start excavating around his property.
Okay. I, I was confused. I thought he could just go ahead and do that.
No, no, no.
To accommodate his two-family.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for 9 Fruit Street for a special permit with regard to E2F?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit for the property.
9 Fruit Street?
9 Fruit Street to August 15th, 2018. Time, Amy?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
This location? You have a second?
Yeah.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Joe?
Joe. Do we have a question?
Yeah, I just have a procedural question. What time, at what time did he ask for this continuance? Was it today?
I think it, what time did you send it to me, Amy? This afternoon, it was?
This afternoon.
Yeah.
So something like deciding whether you want to spend more time on your options. It seemed to me you don't have to wait until the afternoon of the meeting. I mean, if you're sick, if there's a family emergency, that's one thing. But something like this, that, that, you know, you do have time and you reflect on it, I, I just don't think it's, it's fair. When people come out and at the last minute, it's, it's extended, it's postponed. I, I, that doesn't seem fair to me.
It, it is unfortunate, but Amy, you did notify people?
I did.
Who did you notify?
Karen.
It's the time factor.
Amy did. Amy notified me around 3:00, 3:30, 4:00 o'clock. I was at work, so the best I could do, I couldn't call people, so I sent out an email. But unfortunately, people didn't get the email. I think. Can you just provide the phone number?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There were three people at the elevator.
Okay. If you'd like to be on the email list, would you please contact Amy, and she'll put you on the email list in the future?
That's not it, it's the amount of time. I can't, I mean, can't they be held to, if it's something like that, to 24 hours, 12 hours, so it's not the afternoon of, when people are, are working and doing other things and have planned to come?
We, we agree as well, but the bylaw doesn't put a time limit to it.
The, the town bylaw?
The town bylaw does not put a time to it.
Right. We agree.
Maybe that should be changed.
Remember, we.
I mean, it's not fair.
We have to prepare for this as well.
Yeah.
Everybody on this board has to read and prepare for this hearing as well at 7:00 o'clock. So when it gets continued, we're in the same position as you.
Well, it just seems ridiculous to me. I mean, it doesn't seem fair. It's not fair.
Yep. You can make a bylaw change for the spring bylaws next year, that changed, okay?
Good idea.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, it is 7:28. We are going to move on to our second hearing. Which is 84 North Street. This is a continuation of the public hearing for Richard Bremlis. This is the, okay.
Take both of them?
Take two.
Got you.
Take two in the same direction. The floor is yours, Mr. Bremlis.
Good evening, thank you very much. Unfortunately, the attorney couldn't come tonight because of a family emergency, so I was hoping the board would allow me to speak as well as my father, if that's okay, as responded.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we've presented 10 years' worth of Schedule C for the wood business, forestry operations. I understand that most laws typically go back seven years of record-keeping. I think the original request was for 1969, but as you know, most, most laws govern seven years, so I think you'll find that should satisfy what you're looking for.
Okay. And I did contact your attorney this afternoon, because the only thing their letter did not state was that they prepared your father's tax returns, including a Schedule C, which they did send me, which I will enter into evidence. They did send me a letter stating that they did prepare your father's Schedule C since 2013.
Correct.
So that we'll, we'll put into the record as well.
Also, if you wouldn't mind, I understand there's been some questions about the forestry products that we produce, and we've actually brought a few samples for a show and tell of some rough products that we've supplied to some Norfolk residents, and they've produced some very nice bowls. And we were hoping that maybe the board would entertain looking at the bowls to see exactly what products we supply and for what reasons, if that would be allowed.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So on the back of the bowl is actually signed, it's actually autographed by the resident, and the types of wood are, are listed in the back, so.
Do we get to keep these?
No, but these are hand-dated, and it's a light oil that keeps them from cracking. And each one's made from a different type of wood, right from the whole goods that we've provided to this Norfolk resident. And we provide not just firewood, but it's also, you know, lumber, we provide logs for, for tables, bar tops, anything of that nature.
So do you sign and date generally most bowls that you produce?
We don't, we supply whole goods for residents that might produce these. So this is one residence, his name is John. He's actually hand-carved these and coated them in a light oil for preservation. But we provide products, it could be anything, like I said, it could be for bar tops, it could be for lumber, we provide stuff for sawmills, we provide firewood. What we produce is specifically firewood here in Norfolk, but we do sell whole goods and raw materials.
So like this is a piece of cherry, so it would have been?
It was, it was a chunk of a log. This guy, it's specifically knots, actually, because when you whittle down a knot, you'll get nice layers of diagram, you can, you know, rings and growth rings. So that one there is probably a knot, you'll notice that there's different patterns to it. So this was a piece of cherry that he signed, dated. So a bowl like this typically is like $300. Very nice bowl. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to show these to you.
Anything else you have for the board?
That'll satisfy what we're looking to provide.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Okay.
Now, the contention here is this is a grandfathered business. Or, they're correct? They are saying this business should, has been granted, or should be grandfathered based on the fact that it's been in continuous use. Just to make sure that I understand our bylaws, okay? The ownership of the land is irrelevant to the bylaw that he is requesting the continuance of a non-conforming business. Is that correct?
Correct.
One is not tied to the other.
Correct. He is asking for the use. He has a non-conforming use, which he's asking for, which is not tied to the land.
To be continued.
Correct.
Okay. And, and if, if somebody were to buy the land tomorrow and then evict Mr. Bremlis, okay, that has nothing to do with our decision. Our decision is about today and this continuing business on this property of the cutting and/or selling of wood.
Correct.
So the last question is, if this property were sold, does the continuing grandfathered use carry forth to the next owner?
No.
It does not?
No.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Also, just, just sort of, just a quick review of this. I recollect that, was there something like two pieces of property with, with ill-defined addresses or something to that effect with this? And there was, was there also a question of who owns this property?
Correct.
And this property's involved in a probate right now?
Correct.
So, so I'm just trying to review, like, what, I, I can't remember now the details of.
There is a, this is 84 North Street. 82 North Street is owned by Mr. Bremlis. 82 North Street is the, we'll call, and I don't want to say the legal address, but it is the address that this property has been identified by the town. It says 82 North Street.
So it's 82 North Street?
Correct.
And it's, it's, is it two parcels?
I think it's more than, is it, I think it's one big, one parcel. There's one parcel.
There's one parcel and maybe two addresses?
Correct.
Is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay.
Which one do you think? This has a player on it.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and is the applicant the landowner?
No, the applicant is not the landowner. The, the, the landowner was his mother, and his mother left the property to his sisters.
Which is yet to be.
Determined.
Determined. Okay.
It is in probate, because Mr. Bremlis feels he has rights to part of the property, and his sisters feel otherwise.
Is the estate looking to evict Mr. Bremlis?
Not that I am aware of. It is, it's not, it has not been presented to us.
So, so, so Mr. Bremlis wants to continue this wood business on the land?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Who is challenging that? Is the town challenging that, or are family members, or are?
The town, Mr. Bullock, Bob, would you like to speak to that?
I'm sorry, we're looking at the lot, because it is.
The question was, who's challenging the use of 84 North Street? And I said, obviously, it's the town.
Yeah, it is the town. When, when we were dealing with 82 North, the family florist business, the buildings were in disrepair, and the water was shut off, probably four years ago. I don't have the exact date that it was shut off, but over four years ago. And it was essentially abandoned, the business, so.
The florist business?
The florist business, and we had asked them to take it down, or, you know, fix it so that it wasn't a hazard. They took it down based on the court, going to court. The court told them to remove it, they removed the buildings, and in that court action, we said, you know, the business no longer exists because they've lost their grandfather. It was my contention that they didn't have water on this, on the property. I don't know how you run a business without water service and bathroom facilities. The, the court asked us to give them another chance to appeal that here, so I wrote another letter that gave them another 30 days to apply here to appeal the decision. So that's why it's here.
And the board has already ruled on 82 North Street, the florist, that it lost its grandfather, and we denied the appeal for 82 North Street, which was the family florist.
Did, and just, just sort of, so did the family try to retain the florist business at some point in time?
When you say try to retain?
Well, well, so there was a florist business there?
Yeah.
And somehow a court got involved and told them, take the buildings down?
Well, this is after, it was abandoned for a period of six years.
Okay, so, so it was, it was abandoned, and did.
The town, the town asked, told them that they needed to take the buildings down or, you know, maintain them properly. They didn't. They, there was broken glass and most. There was broken glass in most of the structures, the front porch actually, and a windstorm blew up. So it was actually perfectly vertical, and that had to be removed.
Okay.
So it was, the property was in tough shape.
So the town came along and said, "Hey, take that building down, and by the way, your business is now over with." And somebody went to court about that?
Yes.
To say what? To say that we don't want to take the building down and/or our business?
Both. We said the business wasn't viable anymore, because it's been six years since it's been closed.
Okay.
Four years without water. You can't run a business without water.
Okay.
Especially a florist business. So the court said, "Remove the buildings." They did that.
Who took, who went to court? Who initiated the court action? Did the town initiate it?
Yes, the town.
Okay. Okay. And so the town prevailed on that, the family took the building down, and the florist business went away. And so what remains then is a piece of land with potentially two addresses, and yet another business that's in the logging business industry.
Correct.
Is this what's left? So there's no question about the florists, there's no question about the building. The only question is, is can this, can this logging business continue?
Correct.
Okay.
You're up to date.
Okay, so that's the history of it. Right? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And what we asked at the last hearing was that Mr. Bremlis provide us proof of that he had a continuous business, that it had not ceased operation, similar to the family forest. He presented, the individuals appeared before us and stating they had purchased wood from him. We had asked him for other proof, which is why he's provided us with his Schedule Cs to show that he's been in business operating as a wood, I think it's, the IRS definition is a wood delivery business, or wood-cutting business.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then again, like I said, I asked his attorneys, who wrote me back and said, "I am writing a response to your request for assurance that the above-named client has completed their last five years of tax returns, 2013 through 2017, with this law firm, including a Schedule C for wood delivery at our firm." And it's, I think it's Oriya Sajak Associates in Franklin.
Yeah, CPAs.
CPAs in Franklin, correct. Which we'll enter into the record.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from anybody in the audience? Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. Ruth Bremlis Palumbo, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Couple of things I'd like to change that are factual, that kind of came across as not correct. There is an eviction since August of 2016 for Mr. Bremlis and his wife to evict the property, and that was done by my mother while she was alive. And on that particular date, when we went to court in August, I was her power of attorney. And Mr. Bremlis was told that there was Norfolk Town asking us to do cleanup. Okay? And I have provided you with that paper from the court, which Mr. Mitchell signed. I gave it to Amy. And Mr. Bremlis was in court. So he has known since 2016 about the town cleanup. That continues to be a problem on his end. We've finished what we want to call 82 and 84, which is totally ridiculous. But we also want you to know that he has no water. And how do you run a business without water and a toilet? And what if he has a fire when he's cutting wood, sawdust, et cetera? Okay? He cannot live there, and he does not live there. We feel that 82 North Street, as a florist, the word abandoned is not correct, because we never abandoned it.
But this is where...
We're not revising it, but I just let you know.
Excuse me. We are discussing 84 North Street. So if you have issues with regard to 84 North Street, we'll be glad to hear them. But we've already made a decision on 82 North Street. I don't know if you've appealed it or not, but we don't, we're not going to discuss 82 North Street tonight.
Very well.
Okay.
And one more thing, Mr. Bremlis was asked to have his truck lettered at the last meeting, and I have not seen any lettering on his truck. And I continue to be at my mother's home fixing it up, and I'm there quite frequently. So I'd just like to bring that up to the board if he's done that.
I think, I think at the last meeting, I asked Mr. Bremlis, was his truck lettered? There is no law that says you have to letter your truck if you're in business. I was looking for, I was looking for evidence that he had a business. So one of the questions was, is it a commercial vehicle, and is it lettered? Okay? So we didn't request that he letter his truck. We don't have the authority to ask him to letter his truck. But we did ask him, was his truck lettered? What type of plates he had?
Did he prove that he has commercial plates?
Again, in support of his business.
Did he show he has commercial plates?
We haven't, we haven't asked that question.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bremlis, do you have any...
Would you like me to answer that question?
If you, if you want to.
Yes, we have commercial plates.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any comments? Yes.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Pam, oh, hi. My name is Pamela Russell. I spoke last meeting, and I really feel driven to say something. I have been purchased, my husband and I, as I told you before, we've been living in Norfolk since 2005. Our very first winter, we bought probably eight cords of wood, and every year since, we've bought almost up to 10. Last year, we bought 10 cords. And I have some photos I can show you from some of the years, so you can see. So I just, and I also want to say that this may be out of line, but I usually am. So I just want to say that this gentleman here has been the kindest person, and I called Mr. Bullock and told him this, that this person here has been the kindest person in this town to my husband and I. Whenever we've needed help, whenever we've had trouble, we've never had to ask. So I just want to say that the business that he has, has, is viable. He helps a lot of people. He provides warmth. He provides a service that's needed by a lot of people who do heat their houses with wood, or just like to have a nice fire in the winter. And I just feel, when you make your decision, consider that it's important for a town to have services, and his service is needed. So please, 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 I beg you. I don't know how to say this, any, you know, more, I don't want to get emotional, but I feel that sometimes things get misunderstood, and things get blown up, and things get taken out of context. And I just want to say, this is a good man, he's got a good business, and he provides a service that I know my husband and I really need. So please, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to see pictures?
Bob, is it cords of wood? Is that what the picture's on?
Yes.
Oh, you know what a cord of wood looks like. If anybody else wants to see a cord of wood, they can.
This is 2014, and I can find the ones, I have one that we just got, I can show you one from 2007.
We believe you, ma'am, okay? We believe you.
What kind of wood is it?
It's usually red oak, maple.
I'm only kidding. Thank you.
And it's seasoned.
There you go. Anything else?
Thank you. Respectfully.
All right. Hearing no other questions, could I get a motion to close the public hearing for Richard Bremlis?
I make a motion to close the public hearing for Richard Bremlis at 7:45 for the property addressed, is 84 North Street, reference assessors map 21 block 60, lot 29, in the R2 zoning district.
For the appeal.
For the appeal of the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer's decision in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 8.
Because may I do have one more question that just came into my mind? The taxes on 82 North Street have now been returned to a lower rate, so how will you have him pay his share as a business?
What was the question?
The real estate taxes.
Could you...
Yeah. The real estate taxes have been changed on 82 North Street.
Okay.
How will he be paying his fair share as a business?
I don't understand the question.
How will he run a business on 82 North Street?
That's, that's for the tax collector. It's not for the ZBA.
That doesn't make sense. If you're saying that he can run a business on 82...
I didn't, we didn't say anything yet.
No, but I'm just saying, if, you need to take that into consideration.
We don't, we have nothing to do with the taxing of 82 or 84 North Street.
Can I explain as an assessor what happens? The business, the value on 82 North Street has been reduced because the building was taken down. It really has nothing to do with what he's using. We, if he is in Chapter 61 for a forestry plan, then they can tax, the assessors can tax the trees that are taken down. I, but I don't work in that, in Norfolk anymore, so I don't know if they do or they don't. But that would be the only tax to that.
Yeah. And it wouldn't have anything to do with our decision regardless. Thank you, Debbie. Okay. You get to do it again.
Has it already been made? I said, has the motion already been made?
No, he was in the middle of it, and we had a question.
No, I made it. I just did the second part first, and then so...
All right, do we have a second?
I can second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Can we have discussion first?
Sure.
Can I still ask questions?
Sure.
I just noticed something. In the tax return, Part G, did you materially participate in the operation of this business? For example, I'm looking at the year 2009. Did you materially participate in the operation of this business during 2009? If no, see instructions for limit on losses. For 2009, it's checked as yes. 2010, that's checked as yes. 2011, that's checked as no. Or, sorry, that's checked as yes. In 2015, did you materially participate in the operation of this business during 2015? That's checked as no. In 2016, did you material, same thing, no. 2017, that's checked as no.
You know, I'm not so sure about that.
I think the check mark...
I don't think that's correct.
Okay? They're all checked as yes. In other words, check mark is after the yes versus after the no.
It's a four-digit thing.
Okay, so they, so the, those years switched where it was, that, I see what you're saying now.
See what I'm saying? This is yes, okay? If they put a check after that, it would be no. Okay, so it's still yes, still yes.
Okay, that's confusing.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'm all set now.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to...
We'll add some, if I can. Too late.
Do you people understand what it means? Is there any more questions?
Well, that's why I spoke back.
Do you people understand that question?
John Robbins, 44 Grove Street, Norfolk.
We know who you are. Do you understand the question, what we say? Is there any more questions?
I wasn't going to speak, but Richie...
You don't need a microphone.
Richie, Richie cut my trees down when I built my first house in Norfolk up on Crescent Ave, 10 Crescent Ave, back in 1979. He was operating a wood business then. He cut trees for free, but sold the wood. So, I mean, as far as him being in the wood business, I can go back at least that far. I'm sure I went back farther than that. But he's been doing that out of that location ever since then. Now, that's when the family got along, and obviously, you can tell the family doesn't get along now. So...
That's very astute observation of you, John.
I was just saying.
You missed your calling.
I just went back to 1979, when he was cutting wood.
Thank you. You'll have your turn in a few minutes. We get to your hearing. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing with regard to Mr. Richard Bremlis. Any more discussion?
I actually have a question.
Don't leave it to him.
I hope you're joking.
He always does this.
No, I'm not joking. At some point, and I'm not familiar with all the grim details...
At some point, I'm going to close this hearing. Yes, you're right.
With all the grim details, I'm not familiar, but when water was turned off to the property, and Mr. Bremlis no longer had water to his part of this lot, what's the town's responsibility in all of that, when, you know, a member of the town, a resident of the town, is deprived of water? And he's now a senior citizen. Is there any responsibility that the town bears in that decision?
No responsibility that the zoning board bears, all right?
Correct.
If it may have something to do with the Department of Health, the zoning board has absolutely nothing...
The zoning board has nothing to do whether water is shut off on a property or not.
We're trying to get to the zoning issue, pure and simple.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right.
One more time?
Yes. Anybody else have any other questions, concerns, comments?
Like sport. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing for Richard Bremlis. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll close it. We will, I don't know whether, if we will deliberate this tonight or not. Mr. Kaliza was not able to attend to this meeting, but the board will decide whether or not we want to deliberate it, or wait and allow him to review the tape, since he was at the first hearing, but we will decide that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It is now 7:55.
Do you want me to stay here?
And we have our third hearing. I think you're all, you want to stay for the third one? Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, you want to stay here for a while?
Bob just wants to stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
It's very nice of you.
Does everyone have a packet for 75 North Street?
I do. I have this.
I think I passed about, I just have a lot of extra.
It's closed. Question, question.
Don?
Yes, ma'am.
Either you or Chris, you have the notice of hearing?
Yes.
Yes, right here. Notice of hearing.
Okay, it's 7:55. Don, would you read the notice of hearing with regard to 75 Main Street?
It's like living in a Norman Rockwell building or anything. County Norfolk Board of Appeals has application for hearing for the zoning board of appeals. Master General, do I have to read what, all of this, or just from here down, right?
Right from there down.
Okay. Master General Law, Chapter 48, Subchapter 14, and the zoning, Norfolk zoning bylaws provide that the zoning board of appeals shall have the authority to hear and decide petitions for special permits, variances, appeals, repetitive petitions, and comprehensive permits. Please refer to detached instructions.
No, you don't have to read that. Just get to the public hearing.
Okay. You're the one giving me the advice.
Well, he's, I thought...
I don't think...
Don's only been on the board for a little while.
That's not it.
I'm looking for the actual...
That's not it.
That's not what I'm looking for.
It was a separate piece of...
Yeah, you have it. Yeah, he has it. You have it, Don.
I do, huh?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. Right there.
Okay.
I'll get there.
Start that over again, huh?[1717.54] Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance to Chapter forty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws and any and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals in room one twenty-four of the Norfolk Municipal Building on Wednesday, May sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, for the following application. Deborah Robbins, for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, nine, as amended at Section D two, C two of the zoning, Norfolk zoning bylaws, which allows for the conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of bylaw adoption to a two-family dwelling. The subject property was converted prior to bylaw adoption. The property is located at seventy-five Main Street, Assessor's Map twenty-one, Block fifty-seven, Lot thirty-six, and is in the R two zoning district.
Thank you very much, Don. Outstanding job. Debbie Robbins, come, come visit us. Anywhere you wanna go. Anywhere you wanna sit there, as long as, grab a mic. Grab a mic.
I got a mic right beside me. I don't know if I need it, but I got it.
You just gotta keep that other guy in control in the orange sweatshirt over there. Go ahead, Debbie.
Well, what do you wanna know?
What would you like to do?
I have no, I, well, we applied. The, the property has been used as a two-family residence since my parents got married in nineteen fifty-two. Because they were the first residents to occupy it. My grandfather built the house in nineteen twenty-six. And if you looked at the pictures in the application or the copies that I gave you all, you will notice that both kitchens are still nineteen fifties vintage. Yeah, that's my kitchen, the downstairs. So, we're, I guess we're just looking for proof that, or we're looking for a special permit to go along with the deed that says it can still be classified as a two-family, because it needs a lot of work. We haven't, you know, obviously haven't pulled any permits because we were waiting on this decision.
So, your parents converted it in nineteen fifty-two?
My grandparents.
Your grandparents, when your parents got married?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And this is the upstairs kitchen we're seeing here?
Yes.
How far out? Good. Again, block them then, sorry. Are there two electric meters?
There are two electric meters. There is only, one, it's run by oil. And I control the heat for both units, because that is all still on the same unit. But we have two electric meters, two propane gas tanks, one for each stove. Oh, and I pay the water too, so.
Is this, so the propane is for the gas stoves?
Yeah, that's all it's used for, is gas stove.
And the oil is for, obviously, heat?
Heat.
And there's one, one oil burner?
One oil burner, and I control the heat for both units.
Okay. And I think you said in your application, the house since nineteen fifty-six has been rented. Was it nineteen fifty-six or when your, when you, was your father got his first teaching job, was it?
Right. My father, my parents got married in nineteen fifty-two. And he, he graduated college in nineteen fifty-five or fifty-six. It was somewhere around there. Well, let's think. I would, yeah, well, whatever. It was roughly around there. And then his first teaching job was in Fairfax, Vermont. So, he moved all of us up to Vermont. And my grandparents at that point started renting it out, I believe, to my grandmother's sister and, you know, it was other family members. And then eventually, it just was rented to whomever.
Whomever being, they just rented it out to the father?
Yeah, we would, they would, actually, we never advertised it. We would always look for people because we wanted to like who we were renting it to.
Sure. Okay.
Chris, what district is this property in?
It's in the R one, I think it is. Is it the R one district? Just read it.
R two.
R two district?
R two.
R two?
I think that's what you said when you read it.
Are there separate egresses for each of the units?
Yes.
To the outside?
Yes.
Can you bring up, Amy, can you bring up the pictures of the outside of the house again? Debbie can help us.
Yeah, they're in the front. I think, all right, so, it's all overgrown with bushes, but.
Debbie, why don't you get up and, and actually, I think if you go to the end, she has a better picture.
The end is, yeah, there's a picture of a garage and.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. This is my back door. Over here is the entrance for the apartment and also into my house that you can use too. And there's a little hallway when you go in there. And then the front porch, there is another entrance into, I have like three different entrances.
And does the other, does the apartment, can they access the front porch also?
No.
So, how many egresses from the apartment?
One.
One egress from the apartment.
Well, that's really not true.
Why?
Because in the windows.
Oh, yeah, you can climb out here. We've done it many a times to shovel this roof, because my bedroom's right there.
There was at one time, I don't know if it's even still there, a ladder on the back of that that came down the side of the house.
Oh, there was?
Yeah, you go out the window and you could egress it that way. Now, is it up to code? Probably not, but.
Well, that's one of the things we're trying to run.
That's just a small drop out those windows. And then, also, if you look out the front, you can out that window onto the front porch. Now, that's another egress.
I just wanna make sure that you understand, if, if, if we approve this from a grandfather statute perspective as a two-family, that does not eliminate the need to bring it to code from a health, and I'm not sure what else, okay, as it relates to egress, fire, et cetera and so forth, that, that one is separate from the other.
Yep.
Okay, just, and I'm, I'm assuming you're looking for the board to rule on this first, because you don't wanna make investments and then find that all of a sudden, the board sits there and says, sorry, this is not a two-family.
Yeah.
But again, I just wanna.
And this was, Bob Bullock was the one that actually told, I asked him what to do, and he's the one that told me to do this.
Yeah, okay, but just wanna make sure you understand that, that if, if we approve this as a grandfather two-family house from fifty-two or fifty-six, that, that does not in any way eliminate whatever building code requirements, et cetera, to make this a two-family, that would.
That would be up to Mr. Bullock, right?
Yes, and that would probably be, be part of our approval, that it must be brought to code. All right?
Okay.
Before it is finally certified as a two-family.
Okay.
I think that's up to the building, not up to you, with the zoning board of appeals.
Well, a condition, a condition would be that the two-family meets current code. That would be, how would we leave it?
Or the building inspector sign off.
Because, right, well, not sign off, but it would meet current code. That would be what the building, and that would be the requirement.
Grandfather code?
No. There is actually, there actually is really, that's, there really is no grandfather code anymore. When you're, when you convert this, when you convert this, certain things are grandfather, but when you convert this, you, fire, egress, all has to be to current code. No, you don't have to put in, you don't have to put in electric, you don't have to put in electric, fire, fire alarms if you had, don't have electric now. No, you wouldn't be required to do that. You could still go with battery operated. But you would be required for health, as Don mentioned, and safety, to bring it up to current code as a two-family.
Do you have any idea what that consists of?
That's, that would be up to Bob Bullock. There's a number of different things that you'd, you'd probably wanna talk to him about.
We're gonna be selling this property.
Right.
Whoever's gonna buy it would have to deal with him on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that obviously would be up to you guys as a condition of sale, is that you're, you're asking for zoning status as a two-family. It would be up to, up to the applicant or the new owner, if he's going to continue with that, to get the proper approvals when he converts it over. As far as renting as a two-family.
Chris, am I correct that the property's actually subject to that type of inspection even now? If the building inspector was to inspect the property today, he might find a code violation that has to be addressed even right now. Is that true? That'd probably be true.
A code violation?
Well, let's just say the.
Well, right now, it's, right now, it's considered a single-family home. So, the building inspector.
Who says that? Who says that?
Well, what is it listed as on the?
On the assessor's, it's listed as two family.
Oh, it is, it lists, it lists as two family now?
Bob wanted us to, before zoning came into effect, which is back in nineteen fifty-three, he wanted proof
Right.
that it existed prior to that.
Right.
So, we got a letter from my father before he passed away back in November. Actually, we got it last, I don't know.
Couple of years ago.
All right.
Right.
And we wrote a letter that said, he, you know, he was going to college. He lived in this. When he got married back in nineteen fifty-two, my grandfather, I converted it to a two-family. And it's been a two-family ever since then. And a number of people that I know have lived in there for many, many, many years. And like Debbie said, we never really had to advertise it. We've got people we knew. But, you know, he, he was in college when that, when he first got married and started having my sister and I before he graduated.
Yeah.
Again, I guess my grandparents had a few bucks, and I don't know, but.
Excuse me, if there was something mentioned, I just, are you saying on the tax assessor's map, it is currently listed as a two-family?
No, on the card, the property record card.
Record card, it's listed.
As a two-family.
Family, and.
I'm sorry, the property what?
Property record card.
Field?
The field.
The assessors have, every single piece of property has a little card, and that card identifies components.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, you're, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's already identified as a two-family.
Yes, according to the.
And as, as, well, I was the assessor here from nineteen ninety-two.
No, Amy said it was on there.
Until two thousand and four. And when I got the job in nineteen ninety-two, it was already classified as a two-family. I, I don't know when it was changed. We never did any research on when it was changed to a two-family. But I'm assuming when they converted it in nineteen fifty-two, my assumption is by nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-four, it was classified as a two-family, because they wouldn't reclassify it until after all the renovations have been done. And it was like the next fiscal year.
I, I guess, if in fact it's on the tax assessor's map as a two-family.
Not the map, field card.
Field card, excuse me. All right, so, please help one of you educate me, okay? If it's on the field card, why is a, a decision by this board even necessary?
Can I explain something? Assessors classify property the way we see it being used. It's not, we don't make the determination of whether it meets zoning or not. It cannot meet zoning requirements, but if it's being used, we're gonna classify it as a two-family regardless of whether it meets zoning or not. And it has been used as a two-family forever, but.
I guess, getting back to this card, okay, if it was classified by the whoever on this card, and what was the date of that, that it was classified?
I think the suggestion is, is that, is that this is just another piece of information that would say that somebody has recognized this as being used as a two-family. It was never adjudicated or something to suggest, to confirm it's a two-family. It's just evidence that at some point in some time, somebody recognizes this thing as a two-family house, going back to at least, was it nineteen ninety-two? It, it could've gone back further. And then, of course, we have a letter here from the gentleman who owned the house, who said that, that since nineteen fifty-one, it had been used as a two-family. So, whether or not it's, it's classified as a two-family, and although it says on the field card somewhere, great, but, you know, we'll take all the evidence to determine whether or not it is in fact a two-family.
But the question, the question could arise is, is it being taxed as a two-family? The value of a two-family or the value of a single-family? And I bet you the answer to that is it's probably being taxed as a single-family home.
No, no, no.
It's on the property record, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's being as a two-family.
I understand it's on the property.
But we only have a single rate in Norfolk, so it really doesn't matter.
It's irrelevant.
Right, right.
Okay, so this is. But the neat reason for our decision though is that they want to sell the property. They want this to continue to the next owner.
Correct.
So, that's why we need to make this decision.
Correct. Bob, Bob wanted to, because, because the bylaw of nineteen fifty-two, it existed prior nineteen fifty-two. He just wanted, because what we wanna do is provide a letter, which they provided, to put it under record, that a special permit was granted.
It don't make a difference in the value of the properties, they sell it.
And again, just another weird question, does that special permit run with the land? You know, it's, it's gotta, it's one of the sure that it does.
The special permit attaches to the deed, so it transfers over and over.
Can you bring that up a little higher, Amy? Or is that?
I can't actually, no.
You can see in the description there, two-family. And that goes back, I don't know how far it goes back, but it goes back a long way.
So, the value, go up to the, the, okay, buildings. We have a first floor, half-story finished, we have a porch, and we have a basement. So, that's what it's being taxed on, correct?
Yeah, first floor, second floor.
Well, it says half-story finished.
Well, yeah, that's the second floor.
Right, but go back up, Amy. Okay, so to my point is, what I'm stating is, is half, first floor, half-story, porch, basement. It's being, as far, I guess, I would say, as you're saying it's a two-family, I'm looking at that and saying it's being taxed as just, it's not getting, it's not being considered two separate properties. With, with outside land separated to each one, it's being considered just a single.
Well, that's a condominium you're talking about.
No, I know.
Excuse me, John. The only other thing that would be considered as two separate buildings is if there, it's an actual condo.
Right.
Then each unit is taxed separately.
Correct.
But every two-family in town is taxed this way.
Yes. No, I'm aware of that. Okay, okay, okay.
Every two-family in every town is taxed this way.
Yeah.
When I first approached Bobby, the building inspector Bullock, when I was working for the town, I said, you know, are you gonna make me go through the scrap that they put these people through with their four-family on?
Rockwood Road.
Rockwood Road. And I went over that with my father, and he, he basically said to me, as those kids, the girls got married, there were twelve people, kids in that family. As they got married, they built each apartment way back when. They were farmers. They were all farmers back then. But, so, I mean, that thing was a four-family. When I started the real estate business back in nineteen seventy-eight, and then I remember that even previous to that. But again, I can't go back to fifty-three. I wasn't born until fifty-four. I can go back that far. Wow, almost that far.
I was born in fifty-three.
But, you know, Bobby wanted us to come here because he doesn't like to make a decision on his own.
Well, he, he wants to make sure that it's done according to the law. We don't want, I don't, you don't wanna, you don't wanna make conjectures just like with regard to the one on Rockwood Road. It wasn't a lot of crap. The town at the time had no four-family, no four-families. So, that's why the board had to hear that.
They didn't have, they didn't have any.
Families, right. So, it was in that, in that property, that property was actually, that property was actually listed as a two-family, the one on Rockwood Road. I mean, I know twenty-five Rockwood Road at one point, had twenty-five North Street, had seventeen people living in it. But it is considered a two-family home. Norfolk, as Debbie probably knows, is, there's a number of homes in Norfolk. And I think North Street's probably one of the more prominent streets that have it, that have a number of two-family homes on the field card, surprisingly enough. And again, it was based on what you said. There was a lot of farmers, families, children got married, they moved in with the parents, they put additions on, and suddenly you had a two-family.
That house on Rockwood Road was actually a single-family at one time.
Yes, right, right, yeah. Okay, okay, great. It's got five bedrooms. Is that five? Is it four? You were up.
Yeah. Technically, yes.
What's the breakup?
Two in the apartment.
Okay.
And three in the downstairs where I live.
Okay, each one is?
The third bedroom is also the only access to the one and only bathroom I have. So, I've never had to use it as a bedroom, but actually, my, that was my grandmother's bedroom.
So each one has one bathroom?
Yes.
Each, each, you know, okay. Any other questions with regard to it?
Is District R and District R-1 the same thing? Is District R and District R-1 the same thing?
Is District R-1?
And District, I'm looking at this right here.
The used table?
The table, yeah, you know, and it has R, but it doesn't have an R-1.
It's, it's, it's all the R District.
Oh, okay, got it, okay.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Is your house a single-family or two-family?
Single.
Yeah.
Single.
Your house is considered a single-family? Because it's around the same timeframe as a lot of these other homes. What year was yours built?
It's listed as nineteen hundred.
Yeah.
Don't know for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if it was a two-family.
We always use nineteen hundred when we're not sure.
Well, I know the, the Alley House, which goes back to the seventeen hundred, was listed as a two-family. And yet, at one point, they did say there was seventeen people living in the home, and it was cordoned off into probably what was probably a four-family at the time. But again, that was what they did back then.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing for Deborah Robbins and Seventy-Five Main Street.
Make a motion to close the public hearing with Deborah Robbins and Seventy-Five Main Street for the conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of bylaw adoption to a two-family dwelling. Subject property was converted prior to bylaw adoption, located at Seventy-Five Main Street, assessors map twenty-one, block fifty-seven, lot thirty-six. At E nineteen.
Second. Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, we'll, we'll make, we'll decide whether or not we want to deliberate this tonight. We've got two obviously to deliberate. We'll let you know the decision. Amy will have it in her office, and you can check in with her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Chris, if we could, and then we'll be back. Thank you. Thumbs up. Welcome back to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of May sixteenth. We are going to be deliberating the appeal of eighty-four North Street and hearing a special permit request, a decision on Seventy-Five Main Street. So first, we're going to deal with the appeal at eighty-four North Street. As we have in the past, we have the right to either to reject, accept, or modify Mr. Bullock's decision. Okay? So do we want to get down some facts first?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's stop right from the beginning. So, so Bob Bullock rendered a decision about, about, because there's a few things flying around here, but specifically about this wood business, correct?
No.
Okay.
About the property identified as eighty-two North Street. He rendered a decision with regard to a property that was identified as eighty-two North Street. Okay? Which included a family forest and a wood-cutting, wood-forestering business. Included both.
It's the fifth page of the package.
Correct.
On January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
You know what, I don't think I have that package.
They gave this to us.
Of, let me see, seventy?
That's where we're looking.
Yes, it should be in there.
Is it the court decision? Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. So, yes. Okay, so, I'm, I mean, appeals, but I'm just going to say, so, so he's referencing the business known as Family Forest. Okay? Are we deciding anything about Family Forest, or are we deciding something about this wood business?
We're just dealing with the forestry, wood forestry, wood-cutting business. Family Forest has nothing to do with this.
So, so then...
Richard filed an appeal based on the fact that he was operating a business.
Correct.
On this property that had this decision now rendering about them having to cease.
I think, I...
Or not cease, but had to, you know, eliminate what was involved.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Richard Bremler was filing an appeal based on this decision that was rendered when, you know, saying that the Family Forest has been closed for approximately six years. They had a kind of, there's no more commercial business here type of thing. It's almost like he's, he's saying, wait a second, I got a business here.
He got swept up in the tide of this, but his business wasn't specifically enumerated. Not relevant to our decision is the fact that he's also arguing he has a separate parcel because that hasn't been adjudicated yet.
Yes.
He ties back to eighty-four because that's what we know.
Okay. So is it fair enough to say, is it, is it a finding of fact that the, as to put in your words, that the wood business has been swept up in this thing called the Family Forest? Is that a finding of, because it seems to me as though that's a material element to this case, which has not really been, you know, fared it out, particularly in this letter.
They're two separate businesses. He's just not specifically named. So I guess, I, I guess one question would be, was Bob Bullock aware that this business was operating?
Yes.
And attached to eighty-four, and so he assumed they were related, but they're actually not.
They're not related.
Two independent businesses.
Two separate businesses. You almost got to pretend there's, you almost got to pretend there's no land.
Okay, okay, so...
Sad to say, you almost have to pretend there doesn't, the land doesn't exist, there's just two businesses.
This makes no reference whatsoever to the wood-cutting business.
Because the property, with, as Bob Bullock sees it, is one property called eighty-two North Street. And what appears to be on eighty-two North Street is the Family Florist. That's how he identifies this as, as a business, is the Family Florist. He does not consider, he did not consider the wood-cutting business separately.
So, so, so he's someone...
The applicant appealed that saying, I'm a separate business on this parcel. I'm not Family Florist. I'm on this parcel of land as well, and I'm a wood-cutting business.
Okay, so it would seem to me that, it would seem to me that, that this letter here is, is deficient as it relates to the wood business. It, it makes no mention of it at all. It, it makes no mention of it. So you can't say one exists, and you can't say one doesn't exist. There's no mention of it at all, zero. It's talking about the Family Florist business, which we can all, I think, agree that the Family Business, the Family Florist is gone. But we're not asking about the Family Florist. We're asking about a wood business, which is simply not mentioned at all. So, so the gentleman appeals something, believing, I think, that his wood business is in jeopardy. Is it?
Yes.
Why is it? It's not mentioned anywhere.
Because it's on the property known as eighty-two North Street.
If you look at this decision, he's addressed it as eighty-four North Street, by the way.
Yeah, on his, on his decision.
So basically, you know...
Well, no, he's, he sent a letter to eighty-four, but he's addressing the property, it's eighty-two.
No, he's referencing that the property...
He, he sent a letter to eighty-four, but he's, he's referencing a piece of property called eighty-two, and he's referencing a business called Family Florist. So how does somebody at what is perceived to be, or suggested to be eighty-four, that's an entirely different business, feel that he's, that his business is in jeopardy? And is it in jeopardy?
Well, it is in jeopardy because he appealed Mr. Bullock's decision.
No, it's, it's not in jeopardy because he appealed the decision. No, he appealed the decision because he thinks it's in jeopardy. The question is, is it in jeopardy?
The, the business resided on eighty-two North Street. Mr. Bullock doesn't know, Mr. Bullock, if he looks at the tax records, if he looks at the field card of the assessors, the only thing that appears is eighty-two North Street. On eighty-two North Street were two businesses. One was Family Florist, which is what this property was known as. But there also happened to be a wood-cutting business on this property, known as Richard Bremler's doing his wood-cutting business.
Yeah, okay.
We are looking at the use of that wood-cutting business. That is a use that Mr. Bremler's has been doing. That is what he has, he has appealed, is Bob Bullock's decision that all activity, all activity at eighty-two North Street ceases. On that happens to be what Mr. Bremler's refers to as eighty-four North Street, his business.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And I guess, in his letter to Richard, he's saying, you know, to remove all business-related materials, and he mentions firewood and debris. So, I would appeal, I would appeal that if I was being asked to remove the stuff that's part of my business.
Yep.
So then we know he filed an appeal.
Correct.
Right, so we, we know about the decision.
Okay.
Richard filed an appeal.
Okay.
So then I guess it comes down to, what proof do we have that there was an existing business and for how long? Right, so let's, want to go through that in terms of...
So we have facts of, we have schedule Cs for, I think it was the last ten years, is that correct? He says for the last ten years.
Let's confirm that.
Yep.
It is, we have one, two, three, fifteen, six, seven, eight, nine, nineties. What else was in that packet besides schedule Cs, or is that just only schedule Cs?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we had the personal testimony.
Right, schedule Cs for nine years.
Nine years.
Personal testimony from individuals in town that they have been consistently purchasing wood from him.
Do you remember, Amy, how many people at that meeting were there that, that personally?
At the last meeting?
At the meeting.
I don't remember.
The same, the same couple was here twice, right?
I think it was three or four people spoke.
At least three.
Yeah, yes. And then I think you have a couple of letters, we have a couple of letters also speaking to it.
Yes.
And one referenced as far back as at least two thousand and five. And then another gentleman spoke tonight that it was much further back.
Much earlier.
Seventies, seventy-nine.
That was John Robbins.
Right. Is, is... Commercial plates play into this? He affirms commercial plates?
Yes, we could put that, yeah, it's a finding of fact. He runs commercial plates. He has a sign out front on the property.
Is, is the fact that the...
With a phone number.
The property...
The phone number's been the same for several decades.
Is the fact that the properties are their current challenge and loss relative to inheritance, does that have anything to do as a finding of fact?
I don't think it does.
I think, I think it's, I don't, I don't think it's a fact for us to make a decision. I think it, it's a fact of the property, but I don't think it's a fact, I don't know, I, anybody else? I don't think it's a fact for us to make a decision.
I don't think it's a fact that's relevant to the conversation.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
How about this, so, so there's no water to the property?
There's no what?
Water.
Correct.
And, and the question is, is, that I would have, is, so what? You know, what, what is the, what is the relevance of that? I understand you can make all kinds of arguments about why water should be there, but is it absolutely positively necessary for the establishment of a business that you have water there? You know, I, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it would, again, it's a wood-cutting business, so I don't think he's receiving, I don't think, I think a customer's coming, they're probably not coming to sit and chat with him about wood-cutting. They're probably paying for wood, so I don't think it's a need to have water on the property.
Cutting wood and putting it on trucks and driving it out, I'm thinking. I'm, I'm thinking like his operation is that, that he cuts wood, stacks it, and then puts on a truck and delivers it.
And delivers it, right. So it's more of a service business, so he isn't receiving customers. So I don't think the fact that he has, he has no one on the property is relevant. I don't think it's any...
Is there any requirement, any requirement within the town that says that you have to have... Is there any requirement, any requirement within the town that says that you have to have certain services on your property if you conduct the business?
My understanding, there is not, it, Bob Bullock has, um, has always stated that, obviously, to run a business on a property, you should have water, electricity.
Right.
But, there's nothing in our, our building code that says to run a business, you must have water and electricity.
So, Chris, would it still be a fact that there's, that no water on the property for approximately four years?
I think, that's a, again, is it, is it relevant to him having a wood cutting business? That would be the question, is to, is relevance? And I would say the fact that he delivers wood probably is not relevant to the, to the, um, our decision.
Is it okay to note that not relevant to the decision, that, you know, it was known to the board that the property was in, you know, dispute in court, court type of thing, as well as we know that there was no water on the property? Just as a fact, but it's just known to us, but it shouldn't render necessarily into our decision.
I don't, I don't think it has relevance, I, I still think that's.
No, I'm saying, but actually acknowledging it's not relevant, but it was known to the board, you know, if that, or it doesn't need to be in part of the decision, I don't know.
We can, we can list it as a fact, it's not gonna change anything.
A fact, a fact.
Yeah. We can list it, sure. So, no water on the property and that the property is in currently in dispute in probate court, would that be the accurate description of it?
Right, yeah.
Okay. He, um, I guess the fact is that he presented us with, with some of the items that are produced.
Mm-hmm.
On the property.
Well, actually.
With actually items that, that are made from.
Yeah, the raw materials that go into other businesses, local businesses.
Raw material that he provides to others.
Do, do we, um, do we need to try to sort of analyze what, a timeframe on this? You know, I mean, other than the fact that the gentleman said approximately nineteen seventy-eight or something, that Mr. Bremlis went up and, and, you know, he had a logging business, he took logs down, took them back to his place, and then cut them up and sold, and sold the wood. Is there any, do we, is there any more timeline evidence?
The applicant stated that he, that this is a third generation wood cutting business on the property.
That's probably a.
That is a finding of fact.
That's a probably important fact.
Right. And because, and I think because of IRS rules, um, he's, most of us are required to keep seven years' tax returns, and obvi- and that was one of our requests for him, was to provide at a minimum.
Okay.
Seven years, which he, obviously, he couldn't, didn't provide us with his tax return, but he did provide us with schedule Cs with a letter stating that a CPA in Franklin had actually prepared those schedule Cs.
Right.
For his wood cutting business.
And that we have a, proof of a continuous business.
Should, should we also state that in Bob's decision, he suggests something, I'm sorry, here, that someone's been closed for two years and that, and that, and that a business has been discontinued for two ye- two, oh, that a business that has been discontinued for two years may not be renewed? So, so Bob is referencing Family Florist as being the business that, that's been closed for six years. In, that may not be relevant to Mr. Bremlis's wood cutting business. Yeah, I, I.
So, to distinguish, like, the decision made here, does it impact any decision rendered?
Yeah, yeah, so, in other words, he's saying, because, because business A has been out of business for six years, business B also should. Remove all business-related materials, firewood, debris, and demolition, blah, blah, blah.
And that's why he's appealed, because he's saying, I, I have continued my business.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
So, that's why.
His, his words in, in his application is that, since, he talks about since the sixties, and at no time was his wood business connected in any way with Family Florist.
See, see, there's my problem with this whole thing, you know what I mean, that, that's, that's my thing, where this letter, it, it, it talks mostly about Family Florist, which is a hundred percent accurate, nobody's disputing it. But then it affects a wood business, which is not mentioned in this document, and is the subject of this, 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 this appeal.
But again, it's the property, it's all on the same property.
Understood, understood.
And it was addressed to him.
Correct.
Okay, which is, he's respond, responding to the fact that he received the letter from Bob addressed to him at eighty-four. Which we know eighty-four doesn't exist as it relates to our tax map.
Field cut, but, um. All right, yeah, good, so, we're getting there, all right.
We have a map, we have a map of the properties as a finding of fact. Which identifies the location of the business.
Mm-hmm.
Boy, that lead backs right up to that pond, huh? Wow.
Hmm.
Jeez. Does, does, this is not relevant, but does anybody know the history of that pond? Was there, was there a mill there at one point in time or something, you know?
What, what?
A mill there?
Um.
You'll have to mention it now.
We have one yes, one no.
It's part of Stony Brook.
Yeah.
The hill closed in nineteen thirty-two, it's a shoddy mill.
So, there was a mill there at one point in time?
On eighty-two, not at eighty-two.
No.
But, but just.
It's down one way, North Street.
Right.
Where Stony Brook is now. When you go to Stony Brook and you turn right, as you, when you walk into the path and there's a, a, a Y, if you take a right and go past the, the dam, which was rebuilt. And walk down in there where the spillway was.
Where the waterfall is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a mill down there.
Is it really, what, what?
Made buttons.
You can still find buttons if you dig around down there.
Really?
I'm not trying to do.
Yeah, you can.
Wow, well, there you go.
See, Bob, you learned something.
It's amazing, it's amazing, and I thought nothing happened in Norfolk, wow.
Maybe you have to take Bob and a guided tour down there, right, he needs a little history, right?
And they did have, they did a public works teardown project of it at some point during the depression, I think, too, didn't they? They hired guys like day workers to come through and rip the whole thing down, and they shut it.
Really?
Yeah, because it was just like, guys who were out of work, who were just, got paid like daily wage hourly wage, yeah.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, the historical society has video, it's on in the middle of the night, you can watch it, it's great. When I was pregnant with my son, I watched them tear down the mill.
Wow.
There we go.
Yeah, pretty cool, I didn't know that, all right.
Little segue, right?
Yeah, sorry about the DVD.
Yes.
All right, Bob, no problem, Bob, anything we can educate you, right? On the history of Norfolk, right? You never know what you'll learn. Any other, uh.
Any other facts? Um, with the, I know the minutes will be part of it, it'll be inserted into the decision package.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because it'll be, um, the other people who spoke about it.
Yes, a lot of, a lot of testimony with regard to the property, the, the applicant running a wood cutting business.
Right.
Continuing.
Yes, continuously. I think that's one of the strongest facts here, obviously, he did provide us with schedule Cs.
Right, no, I mean.
So, that is on, I think that's one of the things we were looking for. After we remember when we deliberated forty-three Rockwood Road. The applicant could not provide us with any paperwork with regard to rents, anything with regard to the property over there to show that it had been continuously used.
Yeah.
So, he did provide us with a schedule Cs.
Right.
My, um, I think he does, I think he did say that he, and it's in the minutes, he, he pays a portion of the property tax on the property. So, a portion of the property tax is being paid by him, under agreement, I think with the owner. So, he does pay a portion of property tax.
The, the business name. Is, that's being adjudicating to be continued? Is there such a name of the business, it's just Richard J. Bremlis?
Right.
Okay, because it's a schedule C.
Correct.
When do we get into conditions of approval?
We have to first have a motion to grant approval, and we wouldn't make, we'd be modify, we would not, we cannot condition, we would not condition an appeal. We would modify the appeal if we so chose, we would either grant, reject, or we could modify. Or we wouldn't be, we wouldn't put conditions on it.
Got you.
Okay. So, does somebody wanna, you wanna make a motion? Oh, go ahead.
I, I still, I'm just trying to close, the, one last thing, which, um, is, if in fact, uh, the courts decide that Mr. Bremlis. Has no, uh, rights to be on that property. Can he take the right to operate a wood cutting business in the R-one district with him to another location, number one? And number two, could, um. The people who were deemed the actual owners of the property now start a wood cutting business on that property? That's, that's what I'd like to understand.
Okay, it's a non-conforming use.
Mm-hmm.
So, if Mr. Bremlis was asked to leave the property, that non-conforming use at that property would cease.
Okay.
So, that would be the end of the non-conforming use. So, I think that answers the first question. Can he take that elsewhere? No, because it's a non-conforming use, which, by the nature of it, is no longer allowed. It's a non-conforming use that existed prior to our bylaws, so it would not be allowed to continue elsewhere.
I'm sure he could do his business to any other land that was conforming.
Hmm.
He could take his business to any other land where, if it was conforming. So, if down the street there was, uh, commercial land whereby you can sell firewood on that land, he could take his business to that, if.
But he couldn't take it to another, a new residential property and start a wood cutting business, he could no longer do that.
Okay.
Okay, and then you had a second part.
The second, the second, second, second part is.
You answered it.
You answered it first.
You answered it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, if you were thinking about starting a wood cutting business by buying the property, no big, no big.
There you go.
Any other, um. Thoughts on this?
Moment, Doc, it was just a little confusing that, that, the two. The, the two uses were essentially just clumped into one use for the property. From Bob Bullock's letter, if you're reading it from an outside point of view and don't understand the facts, it can be a little bit confusing, but I think as you enter the facts and start to understand that. There were two separate uses on whether or not it's one or two property, properties is irrelevant, I think, at this point. But, I, I think it's, like I said, when, when you understand all the facts, I think it's, it's clear. That there were two separate uses going on.
And I think, I don't know if we even wrote it, but that's a good point, that is actually a finding of fact, is that there was two uses on this single property, one was Family Florist, one was a wood cutting business. Yeah, so that is a finding of fact as well, so that's good.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, now we're making a motion, uh, to either grant.
You will.
An appeal, or?
Right, you'll be making a motion, and the affirmative, so you're making a motion to grant. So, if people want to grant the appeal by Mr. Bremlis, it would be a yes vote. If you do not want to grant the appeal, it would be a no vote.
Okay.
Okay.
And yes to grant would allow the continu- continuation of the use.
Of the use, correct. Okay, so, do you wanna take a stab at the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So, I make a motion to grant the appeal of Richard Bremlis. Of the building commissioner zoning enforcement officer's decision in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eight. For the property addressed as eighty-four North Street, referenced assessor's map twenty-one, block sixty, lot twenty-nine, in the R-two zoning district. Let me just give Mr., uh. Of Mr. Bullock's. Letter dated January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. To remove all business-related materials. From the site.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Joe?
I have to do it right, though. We're granting the appeal, right?
Hmm.
I'm granting the appeal.
Okay, so it'll be yes to grant.
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 Yes to grant. Okay, the appellant, appeal is granted, and, uh, you guys will, uh, Joe, you will.
Yeah, we'll be ready.
Okay, very good, all right.
I think you kicked that one around enough, huh?
Hmm?
I think you kicked that one around enough, huh?
Yup, yup, that's good.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, our second one is the special permit with regard to seventy-five Main Street. For conversion of a single family to a two-family. Which existed prior to our zoning bylaws. So, we have finding of facts is, one is we have the, um, the two-family conversion, was it nineteen fifty-two or nineteen fifty-one? I think it says nineteen fifty-one.
Fifty-one, and it's based on a letter written March fifth, two thousand and fourteen, and signed by John H. Robbins, Jr. So, I think that's pretty important.
Yup, yup. What's the date of that letter?
Uh, the day, it's dated, it's dated March five, two thousand and fourteen. Signed by John H. Robbins, Jr.
Okay, that the house was converted to a two-family.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe that was the gentleman who lived there until he got a teaching job in Vermont. And then it was rented from that point on forever.
We have a testimony from his son and daughter.
Mm-hmm.
To the, um, the fact that it was a two-family.
Yup, there's plenty of pictorial evidence to suggest that it is in fact used as a two-family.
Correct.
There are currently two electric services.
Yup.
Yeah.
For the property. There are also two propane services for the property. The property does have common water.
And master heat.
And common heat.
Right. Uh, there was, there's, no residents in opposition? In opposition to the two-family?
And there were residents, there were butters that, um, uh, spoke in favor? That confirmed that it had been a two-family for a while, in the last meeting, Amy? Releasing there?
Yes. Were there, uh, neighbors?
I believe so, there was, uh.
I don't recall, I don't recall, but we can check, we can check the minutes to see if there was anybody, I don't recall if there was anybody, because I think when she came in before, she came in just to discuss it with us, she actually wasn't part of the hearing, it was just a preview.
Yeah, we only opened the hearing today.
So, tonight, so we wouldn't make that.
Wasn't part of an open hearing, okay.
Right. If we look at the criteria, it's a single-family home, uh, prior to the nineteen fifty-two bylaw, the property is located across from St. Jude's. It currently has two electric meters, two propane tanks for the oven for each unit. Um, it existed as a six, a two-family home for sixty-six years with no complaints from the neighbors. The proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the median area, it existed as a two-family for sixty-six years with no undue traffic. Proper site plan is not applicable, and the use is consistent with the nineteen ninety-two plan, which is also not applicable.
Is it a fact if there's two bedrooms in one unit, and three bedrooms in another unit?
Yes, yup, one bathroom in each.
Yup, got that.
There's also one means of egress, is that correct, for one of the units in two means of egress?
They tried to say two, talk about the windows.
Yeah. There's a second-floor window, or, I believe.
Yes. I assume, assume obviously code someday might be, proper ladder needs to be up there, yeah.
I, I assume that there's one septic.
We didn't, I don't think we had specifically.
On the property we didn't ask.
We didn't ask, but I'm assuming one septic, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure there's one. It wouldn't be two.
It would make sense.
It's not on the map anyways.
Yeah, no.
I think when we mention our condition, you might cover the egress concerns in a very general statement that says that, you know, code has to be met, you know, going forward.
The property, yeah, our condition would probably be, property will meet all Board of Health and Building Department codes with regard to a two-family property.
Absolutely. Just so I understand from a procedural, if the applicant wanted to convey title to this property as a two-family, a bank would not loan against that because the conditions of approval would say that it has to be at a certain level of code before it's, before we're saying it's an actual two-family.
I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if you have any...
I think what would happen would be that the bank would hire an appraiser that would go out and appraise the property before they would issue the loan. And so in that process, the appraiser might come back to the bank and say, although they say it's a two-family, it's missing this, it's missing that, it's missing something else, and the bank might reject the loan as, as, you know...
But we're saying it's a two-family as long as it meets, as a, as one of the conditions, we're saying that it has to meet current standards of Health Department.
Well, that's an interesting point, that's an interesting point, because you're talking about making that a condition on here. And what I was thinking about while you're saying that, is that, is that really within our purview? In other words, by default, shouldn't it be up to code anyway? That's not our issue, we're just talking about zoning. If, if the Board of Health, or if Bob Bullock or somebody has, you know, has a different issue. So, so, so it's like this, suppose these people wanna sell this house. A buyer's gonna come along and say, oh, it's a two-family. They're gonna have their home inspector come in. The home inspector's gonna say, well, listen, it might be a two-family, but you're missing this, you're missing that, you're missing an egress, it should be this, you should split these systems, you should do something else, blah, 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 whatever it might be. And a homeowner, a potential buyer, is gonna raise those issues with the seller. The seller can say, well, okay, I'll, I'll make those upgrades and sell you the house for this. Or they might say, you know what, take it as is, I'm gonna reduce my price, take it as is, and do what you wanna do with it. When they do what they wanna do with it, that's when Bob gets involved, because now he has to make sure that they pulled permits and that the construction complies with zoning, or whatever it is.
If somebody buys the house tomorrow, right?
Yep.
And they buy it under the pretense of it being a two-family.
Yep.
And they just move in as is.
Yeah.
Because the building inspector when the house changes hands, does the building inspector necessarily come to the house?
No.
If you don't wanna make any changes now.
No.
So I buy the house, okay? And I rent out half of it, and it's as-is.
Yeah, yeah.
And the bank's willing to loan money because it says there's a zoning decision that says it's a two-family.
Could be a cash deal.
That was why, that was why I said earlier that the house is subject to being inspected right now.
Right, exactly.
You know what I'm saying, at any given time, that house can be inspected and be said that this is not up to code. So I think the owner would have to say, you know, I am, you know, in a situation where I have to decide, you know, am I gonna upgrade this house before I try to sell it? Or will I make sure the person who's gonna buy it is gonna be able to upgrade it?
Or they, or they, or you don't have to make sure, if you're a seller...
Well, I mean, if you're upfront about what they're buying and saying that...
Yeah, but if you say, listen, that's what you buy, if I'm selling this, you buy it. I don't care what you do with it, if you want to give me money for it, and you can do it.
But you're, but you're, you're vulnerable to an inspection that says that you don't meet the code.
I'm not vulnerable, buy this.
Right, but same, but, you know, that's...
I think the owners have made it clear, they're gonna sell this as-is.
Right.
With zoning as two-family, and let the new buyer...
Right.
Yeah.
And the new buyer would be subject, probably before he even gets any kind of insurance binder, to have to bring it up to current code.
No, I agree.
And a new buyer, you know what, that's a cool little house. A new buyer might come along and say, guess what, I'm gonna make it back into a single-family again.
That could happen, too.
You know, you know what I mean? So you sell it the way you wanna sell it. You know, you know what I mean? If, if a buyer takes it as-is, and if it's cash, he can do anything he wants with it, if it's going through a lender, then it's up to the lender's discretion as to whether or not they're gonna lend on it.
I suspect that they feel there's some value in making sure that it's got the special permit being two-family.
Oh, absolutely. Value is always, and that, that was my point with regards to taxes. This property is really just being taxed as a single-family. A two-family ideally, you would think, would have more value than a two-family than a single-family home in Norfolk.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but the only issue there is, so, so what happens is, two things happen. One is, the assessor goes out there and assesses it. Then you have somebody else that applies a tax rate to that. We only have one tax rate. We have, we have residential and a commercial, that's it. So it doesn't matter whether it's a two-family.
The question is, are they assessing it? Are they looking at it when they're assessing it as a, the value of a two-family? Or are they really, I don't know if they are.
Well, there's also the community, the community impact of two-families. Two-families could be more schoolkids, two-family could be, you know, other reasons that, you know, services are involved.
I don't think they look at the value of it, and I, it really doesn't matter for us, but I don't think they look at it as the value of a two-family.
No, I think what they would do is, let's pretend for a minute that this, if you will, wasn't a two-family. It was a single-family house with two kitchens, you know?
Yeah.
The aunt lives upstairs, and whatever, she likes to cook all day, whatever it is, okay? And the assessor's gonna go out there, he's gonna say, well, it's got a roof, that's worth X. It's got how many windows, that's worth X. Oh, it's got two kitchens, that's worth, so is it assessed higher than what a, than what a single-family with one kitchen? Would be assessed maybe so, maybe a little 'cause it has two kitchens. But I think whether, I think the fact of whether or not it is a, a two-family or not is somewhat irrelevant. The value of it is the value of it. Whatever is in there is how you establish value. Whatever, you have your land, building, components of the building, there's your value. If it has two kitchens, three kitchens, four kitchens, it's gonna be different.
But what I'm saying, our taxes don't really identify that. He, if you look at the tax...
And they wouldn't.
It just doesn't say.
Taxes would not reveal, well, if you just looked at taxes purely, you would not be able to tell whether it's a single-family or a two-family house.
Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to do it.
The next owner, though, wouldn't have the opportunity to make a two-family out of it if this decision isn't rendered, I gather. Right, meaning that they wanna have the opportunity to make sure they sold it.
So, so I, I just, now I'm just puzzled on one thing. It's sold for cash tomorrow. All right, I buy it. I go in there, and I live in half of it, and I rent out the other half, as-is. Are you saying that it's really up to whether Bob Bullock stops by and says, my goodness, there's no fire escape from the, or there's no second egress from one of the units, okay?
My, my thought, as I said, there's usually an annual inspection, but how often does Bob or the assessors go into our houses?
It don't, it doesn't, not every year, it doesn't like...
No, it happens every period, over a period, right, right, same. But part of it is making sure that when they go into a house that's a two-family, they look at it to see if it's...
But where, where, if, if there's no condition of approval, where is that? It, it's not in zoning laws, okay? Is it in our building laws? Which, is there something that says that two-family houses must be inspected every two years by the building commissioner to ensure that it meets proper codes?
No, I, I think the sale, and I'm not sure, we could probably check with Bob Bullock as a condition. I think the sale of the property as a two-family, and then the subsequent use as a two-family.
Are two different things?
It will be, because it will be sold, it will trigger it having to come up to current code. In other words, if they decided to stay in that house, they could live as they are. Once they sold that house, as it, sell that house, it still exists as a two-family. But once they start, somebody moves in there as a renter, or they rent out both sides, it's gonna trigger a building inspection, which will require it to come up to current code. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think we could check, I think we could check on with Bob Bullock, but I think it will trigger that.
The only thing I'm aware of is that, if you sell a house in Massachusetts, okay, the only thing you have to really provide, well, you provide two things. One of them is a Title V, that's Title V, which has nothing to do with if it's a single or two-family. And the other thing is you have to have working smoke and carbon dioxide detectors. So the fire department's gonna come out and look, okay? And, and now, if, I don't think it's the fire department's purview, or maybe it is the fire, I don't know. Maybe the fire department will go out there and say, hey, wait a minute, where's your ladder? You, you know, you know, I don't know, I don't know how that goes. It's a good question, though, for, for Bob.
You know what I'm gonna say is, if nobody minds, just let me see if I can contact, we'll do, dial, what do they call it, dial a friend? Let me see if I can get Bob Bullock. Let me see if I can get Bob Bullock on the phone, if no one minds. We'll do dial a friend.
He, he offered to stay, we should've kept him here a little longer. Which I feel bad doing.
This is different. Come on, Bob.
Can you be just filming the step-in talk?
This is, this is almost, what was that show, were we dialing for dollars? That show Dialing for Dollars?
It's a lifeline.
Bob, we're here, believe it or not, you're actually live in a deliberation. And, so we need a little technical advice. We are, we are looking at the home at 75 Main Street. Will the sale of this home, if this home that Debbie Robbins owed was sold without any renovations done, would this next owner be required to bring the two-family up to current building codes? Or would there be no trigger for that home to be brought up to current building codes? And you are live. Yes.
Or even if not, even if not.
Correct. Okay, so you wouldn't make, there wouldn't be any building code requirements caused by the sale of the home? Right, they have, they... Yeah, they have one water service, they do have two electrical services, they do have two propane systems for the ovens. They do only have one heating system. So I imagine one of the things they might try to do is, if they upgrade the heating systems and put in two furnaces, would that, obviously that would trigger a permit from the people putting in the new furnaces. But would that require you then to come in and bring everything up to code, or no?
No.
No, okay.
I, I, Bob, this is Don. What I'm focusing in on is from a safety perspective, the differences in egress from a two-family versus a one-family as it relates to fire escapes and things like that. What, what triggers that?
Is, is a window a means of egress? Is a window a means of egress?
Bob, a window is, a window is a means of egress, but isn't there a certain size requirement for a window as a means of egress? Okay. Okay, all right. Any other questions for Bob? Bob, in the future, we're gonna have to get a picture of you so we can put it up on the screen, so like we do on the news, we can have our, our report from Bob Bullock from afar.
Yeah, and Bob, when our meetings last to 11:00 or 11:30, I'm sure you'll be more than cooperative to be on the phone.
Thanks, Bob, appreciate it.
It's the last time he answers your phone, Chris.
Okay, now I gotta submit my phone as evidence and as a, as a part of the public hearing now, right?
There you go.
Thanks, Bob, bye-bye.
All right, we'll see ya.
Bye-bye.
So one of the things that I would like to see, excuse me, Joey.
No, no, you don't, no, I just...
One of the things that I would like to see as a condition of approval, I am not as concerned about, I'll call it, the building aspects, so where there's two waters, two heats, that, that, if they pull a permit, then Bob's gonna come and look at certain things. But I believe as a condition of approval, because we are classifying this as a two-family, that we should require that the fire inspector...
You know what, you know what, I gotta be honest with you, I disagree. I, I think that we should, if we're gonna do this, right, it's classified, it's, it's functions as a two-family, it's kinda grandfathered as a two-family, it's two-family, done, end of story, done, that's it.
I guess, getting back to, I buy the house with cash.
Yep.
Right, I move in, I rent the other half.
Yep.
House catches on fire.
Yep.
Somebody dies 'cause they can't get out because there's no ladder next to the window.
Yeah.
All right.
It's a town.
No, 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 no.
I don't know, but, but, but in my mind, if we're making this a two-family based on the fact that it's grandfathered,
Yep.
not saying bring everything up to code, but that, because what I'm hearing from Bob, that's not in our purview.
It doesn't matter.
But safety...
Yeah, but, yeah, we're not contemplating a sale transaction here. What we're contemplating is whether or not this is a two-family, okay? Now, if a sale, if subsequent to us, it's sold as a two-family, then, then the caveat emptor, buyer beware. So the buyer has to go in there saying, I'm buying this property as a two-family, okay? I'm gonna absorb the risk as a landlord if I'm renting this out. I have to have insurance and this and that, I have to have everything, everything, okay? If I have my home inspector come in and look at this property for me, and I, with the intention of my son's is a two-family, I think the home inspector's gonna say, listen, you have a code issue here, you know, that window needs to be 20 inches or seven point something square feet. But somebody, guess what, I'm good, if somebody dies in a fire, I've done my thing. You know, I'm, no, I'm trying to be cold about it, I'm just saying. So, but that's not our issue, it has nothing to do with us. So, so our issue is whether or not we have considered, we will sanction this thing as a two-family house. That's it, end of story. I wouldn't even condition on anything, I wouldn't condition on anything at all.
We, I don't think we can, we can't condition the fire inspector. And again, as you said, we're, we're basically approving whether or not this property existed
That's it.
prior to 1952 as a two-family, based on the evidence before us. That's really all we're...
It does make sense, 'cause this goes back, remember when we were trying to determine if the house was four families at one time?
Right, right.
And we didn't even discuss any of this other, you know, aspects about egress and stuff. We were just debating whether it was a four-family home all those years, which was a whole different discussion. So you might be right.
Okay. Any other finding of facts? Any other issues?
I agree with Bob's, with what Bob just said.
Yeah, so do I.
Should we make that a finding of fact? Devin agrees with Bob? Would you like that? All right.
Okay, now the voting on this is gonna be who?
Voting on this?
Anybody who's here tonight, right?
I think, everybody can vote, but Devin will be the, since he's the senior member, nothing against Midora, but Devin will be the, the fifth vote, but we're gonna let Midora vote as well.
Just so I can say something, thank you.
It's good practice for Midora, so...
Wait, how many votes do we need?
Five.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, okay, yeah.
All right, Don, you go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I've gotta find it here. I'm looking for the...
The notice of hearing?
Yes.
It's the piece of paper that was separate?
Piece of paper, separate with the town.
That you separated so nicely.
This one.
No. You had it separate again over there. Too many pieces of paper.
Okay, I see no separate piece of paper there. And this is all my stuff from Abbeville.
It's the one you read to open the hearing?
You read that tonight.
Okay, do you by chance have that?
See for North Street, you can't have this one. There you go.
There it is, okay.
I know the include, by the way, the finding of facts, I include, you know, the description where the property... the description of where the property is and everything.
Yes.
Yeah, so I know that, yes.
Okay, so you'll be making a motion in the affirmative?
Making a motion to, to approve?
To grant.
To grant a special permit?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the special permit request of Deborah Robbins, special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine